Not especially.
Praise the Lord.
I think there's a song about that. Nobody calls. I haven't heard anything about the cold dust survey that we were doing and I thought that was going to be for a year and I thought that was springtime that we started that, wasn't that right? So, I'd like to have an update on that if we could.
Sure.
And I hesitate to bring this up, but not enough that I'm not going to bring it up. Mr. Riddick came and spoke to us one time at school board when I was on school board and he said deja vu all over again. And I just gotta bring up trucks on Hampton Boulevard again. And whether there's anything we can do. I know the interconnector is going to be done when?
You know, probably at the very beginning of 2018.
So, at that point, are we going to officially ban trucks from Hampton Boulevard?
Who are you looking at?
I'm looking at Bernard. Because Bernard told me, you know, at the time I first brought it up, ten years ago, that we couldn't do it because it was a state road.
It's a federal highway.
Right.
It's got a classification under the federal government.
Right.
And for us to restrict trucks on it, you have to get the federal highway approval for a safety reason.
And do we anticipate doing that when the interconnector is finished?
Don't look at me. I mean, I don't really...
Well, I mean, I'm just going to bring up the fact that our underpass is not suitable for a truck to be in the right-hand lane. And not infrequently do I go through the underpass in the left lane and a truck just veers out into my lane because they can't fit under that underpass. And if that isn't a safety hazard, I don't know what is. And at what point do we just, I mean, this is just getting ridiculous.
The intermodal connector.
Right.
It's slated to take maybe eight or nine hundred trucks a day off Hampton Boulevard.
And what do we have now?
Oh, that would be about one a minute. We have a lot more than that. I mean, in terms of working hours. But I, you know, so that's just a partial relief. The Midtown Tunnel is going to handle a lot of the traffic to push it through. But I, you know, I think it'd be very reasonable to start discussions again about, about all of that. And I think if you came in here one day and just said, "No more trucks," you'd probably wind up, you know, facing some legal hurdles. But if you'd got everybody in a room and tried to moderate it and then back it down and then stop it, you could probably get a time frame.
Well, it also, I think, to push it, we maybe emphasize again how little support we get from the state, from what the ports produce as a, as an impact on our roads and our safety and our real estate assessments. I mean, I think we can go on and on about that. And I by no means want to provide a vehicle that pushes them to Cali, which they can't do, or to Tidewater. I'm not, you know, but I just think at some point, we need to have a discussion. The trucks are not monitored. The speeding, I think any of us that do Hampton Boulevard know speeding of the trucks is really an issue. And I see those houses for sale up and down Hampton. And, you know, who wants to buy into that?
And Terry, it's a speeding problem across the city, not only for Hampton Boulevard, but for Tidewater Drive, Virginia Beach Boulevard, Princess Anne Road, where you have a residential area. And the speeding, it's, it's not recognized whatsoever. So, maybe we could have a discussion overall about the truck routes within the city itself and see how that's coming along and what we have in place to address the speeding issues.
I mean, is there a vehicle that, I mean, how do you all feel we should best present it or does nobody else?
I feel what you feel.
It is a problem, Terry.
Counsel on the way.
I don't know why they're going to get on 564 and go around and won't get on Turbo.
They ain't going anywhere. That's a bunch of hogwash.
I said, "Why? Why?" I know where the third cross is.
Well, because they're creating twenty-two new gates at the north end.
Oh, my God.
And they will have direct, direct access to these coming right out of the gate, right onto the connector. But that's at the south end of the gate.
Well, I know that...
Maybe we ought to come and get everybody to get a demonstration.
Yeah.
You know, you're right.
I mean, that's, that's the same ground. And I, you know, and I had, I met with John Lonard during my, you know, and said, "This discussion needs to be. We don't want to talk immediately." But, you know, if you stop, you're talking about they run after hours. If you just sit at Princess Anne, Hampton Boulevard through three light cycles while a tractor trailer is all the way across the, the road in the intersection. I get called once, but I don't know why they don't use Turbo. They argue to use classics. The argument is that if you take a right and you'll have Hampton Boulevard in two miles.
By this time next year, the Midtown Tunnel will be open too, by the way. So, what cars use it?
But if they stop them for speeding, then they back up everything.
But, but even with the Midtown, doesn't get us past the safety issue, the speeding, the underpass. I mean, it really is a problem. And those trucks are not, I mean, that road is not suited for trucks. So, I mean, am I just Don Coyote here again?
I'm, I'm...
I am, and he's telling me I am.
Well, you stopped smoking and, you know, so it's a good start.
Yeah, well, that'll be next month. We'll talk about that, too.
Yeah, know what I'm saying?
I pull these out one at a time.
Just like you started, just like you stopped smoking in all of the restaurants. This is a start.
Right, well, anyway, I, I just think...
I agree with you. And when we had, and when we had Isabel and that tunnel was closed, and I recommended then that we, you know, keep them off Hampton Boulevard, but nobody listened. And here we are again.
You're right. That was a perfect opportunity.
But that was a perfect opportunity to get that done.
Okay. So, maybe you could come back with us about some kind of discussion.
We go.
Thank you.
You know, and I won't say, last time I say that, those trucks are there for a purpose, not merely. They're a huge part of our economy. Okay? So, there has to be at least a balancing of some of that stuff. But maybe the balance is one too far.
At Common Place Elementary School, they're experiencing a problem with the ice cream trucks coming out to the schools during instruction time, right before the children get out. And a couple of the grandparents have emailed me and gave me a call about what we could possibly do to, to help them with the ice cream trucks. They come approximately at 2:30 in the afternoon. School is not out until 3:30 in the afternoon. And they have the music going to entice the, the children. And once the children are out, there's this street that they have to cross to get to the ice cream trucks. And some of the parents are really concerned about that. The other interest is the underpass on Virginia Beach Boulevard. If we could possibly check the lighting as well as the cleaning of the underpass and driving around the city, it looks like it hasn't received any type of upkeep at that underpass. It has a lot of dirt and grime on it. So, and a lot of our scholars coming from Boogertown, Washington High School, as well as Ruffner Middle School, use that underpass, as, as well as families. Thank you.
My, um, my only concern today is something that we've seen two times, and in my opinion, two times too many, and that's where planning is concerned. First, we had the young lady who got taken down the rabbit hole with the business for special occasions, special events. Then we had Omar come in here last week with the situation where, or the week before last with the situation where he was proposing a, a business with no parking. And I don't think that we should have these people go through these exercises in futility. Because to come to us, for it even to get past planning, to a point where it would come to the council for you to have a business that seats 200 people and there is zero parking, that should have never gotten past planning, to me. And the same thing with Krista and her business with regard to the ACO zone. It should have never, ever happened. And so, I think that we need to make sure that whoever is taking these applications, whoever is advising these people in planning or economic development, or a combination of the two or whatever, that they're making sure that these are viable projects. When people come to them with these what-if scenarios, I know we want new businesses and we want to be friendly and all that kind of stuff, but this is not good. And then they come, they go through all of this, they incur expense, they buy buildings, they do whatever, and it's either a big hullabaloo like Krista's was, or it's no, because it makes absolutely no sense with regard to the parking situation. I just don't think that, I don't know who dropped the ball. I don't know who was at the switch. I don't know any of that. But I know that somebody has to be responsible in telling people, "This is not a good idea because X, Y, Z." And I, I mean, we've seen it twice already, and to me, that's too, too, too many times, too soon. So, whoever's handling that when it first comes out there needs to be a better gatekeeper, for lack of a better word, or know the rules better, or know the ordinance is better, or something or another, to keep people from going through this and then, you know, having a situation that then the council has to handle and a newspaper gets to write about.
There are complications with, with both that you just said, but in each scenario, you're exactly right. Whenever there's something that we should be in control of, we should do the best we possibly can.
Dr. Salam.
I believe in last year's budget, we voted on money, and it may have been through a state grant, to look at the timing of all of our signals in the city. I know Mr. Riddick brought up about the roads, but I'm also concerned about being able to get through the city of Norfolk. When I left my school to get here for Uncle Pete's announcement, the, I, I got stopped at five lights going down Tidewater Drive trying to get here. And it just seems like I was sitting and waiting and not moving. In the morning, when I leave East Ocean View to drive to work and I go down Little Creek Road and Tidewater Drive, I hit seven or eight lights coming up there. And cars are not moving. They're not, people are not allowed to get to places. And I'm just wondering what the status is of the re-signaling and the timing of our lights and how that's going and maybe either a brief or even a presentation on that. Does anybody else feel that way, like you can never get through Norfolk? I mean, I just...
Sometimes over Brambleton, it's everything.
Hampton Boulevard.
Yeah, and just, I, I understand we don't want to create speed zones, you know, with lights, but people gotta move. People gotta get to work in the morning and nobody wants to leave 45 minutes before they get to work and you only work 20 minutes away from where you, you know, live. And I think we, we need to just kind of see where we are with that. And then the second thing is the commercial properties, retail properties and landscaping. How much control do we have as a city when it comes to having businesses, particularly new ones? And I'll, I'll give you an example. Chesapeake Boulevard and Little Creek Road, where CVS is brand-new and Wawa and the Shell gas station on the right end. All four of those properties have grass growing out of their mulch. They're, they're not maintaining the verge, which I believe they're responsible for, even though it's technically city property, just like a homeowner has to maintain that, that part. But what are we doing to hold these guys accountable? They're not picking up litter that's getting trapped in the bushes. They're not hedging, they're not hedging. And Barclay will have a little bit more time, you know, maybe he can help us and put you on code patrol with landscaping.
He'll get the contract.
I was just going to say, he's not doing it for free.
That's right.
But I know, I know Barclay and I, we harp all the time on, and maybe it's because the city doesn't do the best job on our own property, so maybe they think they can get with it. But just go to that intersection, it touches a couple of our wards, and look at the landscaping of these places. And I brought up, you know, as well, you know, like the new Burger King at, on Little Creek Road by Sam's Club. It was voted on under Terry's rule for trees, you know, that you've got to have a certain amount of trees. I call it Terry's rule, you know, for landscaping and the drive-throughs. But when a car takes out those trees and they don't replace it, are we going back over to them and saying, "You need to replace that tree"? Or if a sign gets knocked down and they don't replace the sign, we're not maintaining the landscaping that was approved by us? These are the, the things that I, I think that we've got to start looking at to make our city, you know, shine and look really good. And I just, I know it's high grass season, just driving down some of my corridors, I'm seeing a lot of commercial properties with grass that are over a foot tall, and, and they've been like that for a month. I know it's rainy season, it's harder, you know, I, I have a hard time even getting out and cutting my own grass, you know, on a regular basis. But we still at some point have to hold these people accountable. And I'm hoping that we're stepping up that code enforcement and going after that. We've, we've added positions, but we really need, and we need to take the money that we collect off of it and use it to hire more people that maintain our own landscaping.
We talked about it, you know, I work in my 14 municipalities, all of them have a little fire. You take 7-Eleven on Princess Anne Road, they planted trees, they cut off two crepe bird, they're at, you know, three feet above the ground. Once we through, we never go back. They, they don't take care of it. We talked about having, they, they, every Hampton, Newport News, they have somebody come back to the, to the, to the commercial property and says, you know, "These trees", a lot of, our people plant them in the, that's all right, I'm gonna pull them out in a week anyway.
The 7-Eleven on, in front of Home Depot took out all those pine trees that they had planted, which was required under our...
They plant them and we not look them. And we talked about having a pay physician, staff in a position to go back and look at, you know, a year, at least a year. Some of them, but the minute they get their certificate, a lot of procedures are happening here.
And we did add some additional positions to the budget this year to address some of those issues.
So, I think maybe what would be helpful, instead of us keep on bringing up, is maybe an update every once in a while of how many citations have been issued. I know that they keep that data and letting us know that it's actually getting done. I know they don't put the actual citation on the outside of the business. Maybe we need to start doing that. Maybe we need to start shaming them and putting a stake in the ground with a citation on it in front of it. But, you know, maybe some data would help us, you know, seeing how effective it is. Maybe we need to have, have two people that are doing it.
Maybe, maybe we should have a stipulation when we give them the ordinance that says, you know, that it's dependent on, we are rechecked and they maintain it. I mean, we ought to be able to put that in right at the beginning.
I think it, I think it is in there, but I don't think the portion in the bottom line.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna...
When they, hold on, can I, please, when we talked about signals, over by Chesterfield Heights Academy, the light there at the, it's the light at the light rail, the interstate. I mean, there's like three lights in a rock-throwing distance, and they're all timed up, jacked up. And the schools, the, when the kids are getting out of school and the buses and all, it's just a hot mess. And so, I'm glad you brought that up because I had it in my notes and I don't have my notes with me. So, the, we need some kind of timing regulation or something over there. And in the mornings when people are trying to go to work, it is just a mess. Yeah.
Maybe we need an ordinance, make sure all of our traffic engineers live in Norfolk.
They could feel our pain.
They're required.
Or we could stop 7-Eleven.
So, we're gonna, we're just gonna read this and then we're gonna go get our food and come back in and eat. You're in the closing.
I move that members of council assemble in closed media on May 24, 2016 at 4:55 PM for the purpose set out in clause, in clause 1, 7 and 29 of subsection A of section 2.2-3711, the Freedom of Information Act. That is one, discussion of appointments to boards, commissions and/or authorities. Seven consultation with and briefing by the city attorney regarding one legal matter regarding a suit quieting a title. And 29, discussion and briefing on a grant where a discussion in an open session would adversely impact the bargaining position of the city. Scraves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protigere?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. That we had discussed in the previous month, and it will be building a connected city. We have Stephen that's coming back, short-term rental, smart processing and Vision 2100. On Vision 2100, we're attempting to do something different tonight. We're calling it First Look, where, while I think sometimes you enjoy hearing a presentation, but we think there may be some opportunities to get information to you in video format. So, the Vision 21 presentation will be one of our first attempts at the, another way of getting information to council. So, but before I turn it over to Stephen, there's one pop-up that I'd like George Homewood, there's one item on the agenda tonight.
How's that?
Thank you. That we just wanted to talk about briefly before you go upstairs. One item.
Valentine School?
Yes.
So, that, the, the Ballantyne School comes to you all with a recommendation for approval from a planning commission. It was one of the longer public hearings that we've ever had at the planning commission. And the discussion had absolutely nothing to do with the rezoning and everything to do with the location of a basketball court. And I think we have a diagram that shows where the basketball court is.
So, the existing basketball court is going to go away when this is developed. It's currently sitting right about here. This area here was identified early on as a potential location. This is not part of the rezoning. This is all that you're asked to look at tonight. And the issue about where the court goes is entirely part of the LDTC, which you all will consider at a different time, and it won't be the planning department standing in front of it.
So, we are just voting, voting on the rezoning that has nothing to do with the basketball court?
The rezoning means this basketball court that's here goes away. Where, whether it is replaced and if it is, where it goes is part of the LDTC. It's not part of the zoning.
What is the LDTC? What is that?
The land disposition disposal contract.
Development contract. It's the sales contract.
Yeah.
So, okay, now, this proposed place back here in the back, how well-lit is that space and how visible is that space? Because I'll, my personal opinion, basketball courts can be good or bad, just like playgrounds and things like that. If they're in locations where they're not well-lit, they're back off, you know, a road where people can't see them or whatever, they become kind of havens for all kinds of interesting activities. But this particular court where it is seems to me like it's in a decent location because it's easily seen from the street. It's well-lit, you know, nothing interesting, very little that's interesting can happen without it being seen from the street because it's perfectly in view of the street. So, how does this location compare to the locations?
Again, just, so, we're clear. You know, if you want to keep this basketball court, then you need to deny the request to rezone. Because once the rezoning takes place, this all becomes residential development and that basketball court goes away. The question as to whether it's moved to here, or something else is placed here, or a basketball goes someplace else, that's really not part of what planning is talking about tonight in the rezoning. That's, we've got repos and, and others. As far as this, you have in front of you petitions from residents, some of whom think that that's a great place for a basketball court, some of them think it's a horrible place for a basketball court. In our mind, it's not part of the question about whether this becomes housing.
But my, in my position, is to eliminate the basketball court, period. Basketball courts can become headaches, you know, when it comes to, you know, washing cars, loud music and all of that. And if somebody has a mortgage there, then, you know, it's a turnoff. I would like to see something softer, like a tennis court, you know, it has less of an impact. And, and I mentioned this, I don't know who I was talking to, somebody in planning or commission or whatever, but basketball courts can become a headache. One of my questions is with this developer, how much land does he get? Where does his lands stop in terms of the lake that's there and open space? How much control would he have over that lake and the open space, if any?
Yeah, he would not, he wouldn't have control of the lake. That's his footprint right there.
The developer's line is here bounded in red.
Now, that top, that top red is, where's the street? Where's the street?
It's bounded on three sides of the streets.
Uh-huh. For the street that runs below the property?
Right.
That runs parallel to Princess Anne Road. What street is that? Where is that?
Uh, let's see, this is, I mean, where, where...
Me, Ballantyne, so...
No, it runs...
This is Ballantyne.
Yeah, but it would run, there's a street that goes through there and it would run parallel to Princess Anne.
Parallel, yeah, it's this one over here on the left-hand side. Yeah. And that's the one that would run parallel to Princess Anne Road.
Okay. So, he'd know, his property, you know, he would have no control over the lake and all of that open space that goes up there.
That's right.
This is, this piece of property is what the developer would control. This is...
No, I just said, we're trying to keep this as separate in terms of this is, again, for the, for the zoning. We're gonna have a community engagement piece with the, with the residents in terms of, you know, basketball court, no basketball court. Because again, it's, it's their, it's their community and we'd like to do it that way. So, again, we are working with Councilmember Johnson and really, you know, putting together a community engagement to talk about that part of it. And we've shared that with Mrs. Aswar, who's the president of the Civic League there, but these are separate issues. This is a zoning piece of it. And just like you do anything else, we need to have a conversation. Get all parties to talk about how we configure the court and those kind of things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
George. Stephen?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to provide you with an overview of the progress being made by the city of Norfolk to becoming a connected city. I'm excited and I want you to be excited that we're leveraging technology to enhance the community's quality of life, to bring economic development to the city and also to facilitate a well-managed government. Tonight, I'd like to talk about three major areas where I believe we're building a connected city and can continue to build on that. One, we will expand our broadband accessibility and capability, and we'll talk about that project a little later in, in the brief. We're going to increase access to public, free public Wi-Fi, and we'll continue to support our smart city initiatives. And the city of Norfolk is leading the region in technological innovation in a number of areas. We're going to become one of the first cities to provide free Wi-Fi in public venues, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the future. But also, we've also had broadband capability to our critical city infrastructure for over 10 years. Many cities are just now getting on that bandwagon and beginning to do that. So, we're going to talk about that. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question because we had someone come to us from the library board that asked about additional bandwidth. And now we're talking about free Wi-Fi. And maybe it's just my ignorance on the difference, but what's the, I don't understand how you need more bandwidth and how the free, how the Wi-Fi, how does it all connect together?
So, there, there are two separate issues. The, the broadband, high-speed internet is the connectivity of the city's infrastructure. And so, we are connected to all libraries. I'll show you a graph in a few minutes, but we're connected to all public libraries. But for several years now, the libraries have been providing pre, free public Wi-Fi access to residents, which is more of an air-type transmission to cell phones and whatnot. So, one is for inside the library, but they're all connected because eventually your Wi-Fi is connected to an internet point. So, I'll try to talk about it as we go through. So, you all know that increasing accessibility to broadband or high-speed internet is important as we move towards more complex business solutions and processes, particularly if we were to go after biometric and medical and advanced manufacturing industry. I wanted to talk about a few critical descriptions and definitions before we go into the brief that'll be helpful. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention speed, and really, I'm just talking about a measurement of how fast data is transmitted across the system, whether it's internet or wireless or, or otherwise. And so, you'll hear terms out there like gigabit, gigabyte, gigablast. What's important is the Federal Communications Commission defines broadband or high-speed internet as 25 gigabits per second. And I'll talk about that as we go through the, the brief. And to your point, the, a lot of times, we've equated internet with cable, fiber, above-ground and above-ground, but today, we're even looking at Wi-Fi and... other wireless-type technology. So, the city will be able to increase this accessibility by expanding the existing capacity that we have with our current broadband internet. We'll be able to increase and are increasing the number of competitors that are coming into the region. And again, we'll increase the use of free public Wi-Fi. So, how do we determine the appropriate speed as a user? What speed does a user need? Again, I defined broadband high-speed at 25 megabits. The, the average user in a home that's emailing or web searching or things like that is going to use much less than 25 gigabits. But as you go up this needs continuum, you're going to see that for the kids who are doing video streaming, they're going to need at least 50, 50 megabits of, of speed. The average residential home today is using between 100 and 200 megabits, and that's because they're using multiple users and they're doing online gaming and stuff like that. Currently, Cox in our area is only providing about 300 megabits is the top speed for, for a home. You'll begin to get into high-speed, super-high, ultra-high speed when we look at 1 gigabit. The city currently will be moving to 1 gigabit of internet connectivity on our, on our network. This is extremely fast, and in reality, most homes are not going to use that, that level of, of service. So, as a municipal government, our first responsibility is to provide connectivity to our mission-critical facilities and providing services to, to our residents. So, as CIO, that's my, my first role and responsibility. But there are a number of other things that we can do to provide broadband and other services. So, some things the city can do is we are in the process of renegotiating the Cox franchise agreement from Municipal Services. Again, what we can influence is the fact that we pay for certain services. We, we lease cable and fiber. We can renegotiate our right-of-way responsibility, and we can talk to them and, and about educational channels. One of the most important things we're going to do, and we'll talk about the project that you funded in a few minutes, is expand our fiber infrastructure. Fiber in the ground in today's world is an asset, and we can leverage that. All the fiber that we own reduces our dependency upon commercial vendors. It reduces our costs, and it actually provides opportunity for us to lease back to other companies that might be coming in, into the city. So, that's a real asset that's important to the city. And of course, technology is changing, doubling every three years. We want to be on the cutting edge of, of this type of environment. And I will say, it's my understanding that this was the first city council to go paperless in the region. So, I mean, even years back, we've been doing, doing smart things, and we're beginning to talk to vendors about the new 5G technology, which is the high-speed wireless where you'll be able to get that 1 gigabit we talked about right on your cellphone. What can't we do? And we talk, cannot do. We talked about this the other week, but we cannot set internet and cable rates for residents and businesses, and we certainly can't override service provider business models. But we can do a lot. I wanted to call your attention, there's been a lot of conversation about rates. If you remember from a previous slide, I said the average household will use between 100 and 200 gigabytes bits of speed. If you look at the, the regional rates that the two major providers are, are providing here in, in our region at 150 megabits, you can see there's very little difference in price. I will say that Cox is looking at bringing the 1 gig, you've heard about Gigablast, into the city. The, the issue is Gigablast is only for new construction areas because of the technology. And, but we will have the first Gigablast site in Norfolk at the Watermark Development and Worth's Corner coming during the summer when that project fires, fires off. For the rest of the residents in the city, Gigablast or 1 gig will be over the next two years as, as Cox modifies their, their technology. So, that's kind of the timeline that we're looking at. There are other alternatives, non-broadband rates for underserved areas. Cox has a program for low-income families with children in K-12. It's fairly low-speed, 10 megabits, but it was, you know, it sufficed for, for email and, and web browsing. But we're going to talk about some alternatives where I think we can help residents as we move through the brief.
Would that be a contract that we're doing with Cox?
That would be one of the areas I think that we would, we would look at. It's in the current contract.
The area where we have the, the families with children being K through 12, we already have that contract, that understanding with Cox?
Yes, ma'am. It's under.
Okay. Do we have the data that shows us how long we've been in partnership with them, Norfolk Public Schools and Cox, and what the impact has done then? How many families have taken advantage of the partnership between Norfolk Public Schools and Cox?
I, I could get that information from Cox. I don't have, I don't have the data.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not tracking that particular analytic.
But Cox, you could get it. You could get it from Cox.
I'm, Martha, I'm pretty sure that we, I'm pretty sure that we can.
It's not part of our contract.
Right. I understand that it's not a part of our contract, but what I'm asking for is the data on how many families Cox is servicing under the partnership with Norfolk Public Schools and Cox Cable, and whether it has had a direct impact on the children who need the service between the partnership. That's what I...
We can see if we can get the data, then we'll do legal counsel to you.
So, who gets the data?
It's, it's not in our contract, so we don't get the data.
So, does Norfolk Public Schools get the data?
No, this is a service that's just offered. What is it called? It's a Cox service that's offered out.
They advertise it every year to the students, and then the students take it home, and they have to sign up for it, or the parents.
Okay. Let's see if Norfolk Public Schools has the data. Because it is a partnership, and we should be tracking it.
I don't, I don't, Council, I don't think that we can get data from private deals. So, when the parents go home, they have to call the number and sign up for it through their house, through the school system. So, they don't bring a form back to the school and say that we've signed up for it. It's...
Right, but it is a partnership with Norfolk Public Schools.
No, it's advertised to...
It's, it's a business relationship.
They just bring, they just give the flyers out, and then we, we give it to the kids.
So, it sounds like all we can do since we don't have it is to ask Cox, ask Cox how many kids...
It's active participation by the parents to, to sign up.
They do it in several communities across the country for small, for low-income families.
Right.
But I still think it's a, a, a business offering that, you know, they're able to, you know, do it that way.
Okay. This, this slide is sort of a bottom line upfront of what we're doing and what we plan to do. And so, I'm going to touch lightly on this slide. There'll be much more detail in the, in the coming slides. But these are four areas that we can influence and, and drive increased accessibility of broadband and other services to our citizens. So, for residents, we provided, we talked about this, we provided free public Wi-Fi in city libraries for several years now. We're in the process of expanding, as I said, free public Wi-Fi, and we're, we're looking at piloting a couple of neighborhood projects in terms of, of Wi-Fi capability, and we'll talk about that in a, in a few minutes. Businesses are very important. We, I believe, the city has expanded the pool of contractors who are coming into the city, a number of, of companies coming in, offering fiber. We're, we're able to facilitate that process through our right-of-way responsibility that we have. And also, we'll be able to use this fiber again, as I said earlier, to leverage relationships with other companies. Really proud of this next one. We'll talk more about that. But we, we're beginning to expand access of free public Wi-Fi in targeted downtown and business corridors, and we'll talk about the importance of that a little later. In terms of city services and school, we've just recently negotiated with Cox and received, basically quadrupled our internet speed with savings of about $25,000 a year. So, it's not so much the savings as the fact that we're going to be able to go from 200 megabits to 1 gig of, of internet capability on, on our network. The schools were able to leverage this same contract as a result of our good work and saved about $50,000. And as we move forward, see real opportunity for the city and the schools to partner and leverage this infrastructure that we're going to build out, and we'll talk about that a little more in, in a few minutes. I'm also excited about, we're in the process of forming a working group that will be comprised of both a business and a community element that will help us with our strategic partner to develop a long-term strategy for broadband. We're going to have the infrastructure in place that'll be good for 15 to 20 years. But this team will, and we're working with Dominion Enterprises, we're working with the military, NRAH, we're working with multiple businesses, Norfolk School Board. And so, I think this will be a team of experts that will be able to help us put together a long-term plan that'll be good for the city, both from the terms of city government, residents, and business. So, first, I want to say thanks to the council for approving this particular project in the 2017 budget, the expanding the city broadband accessibility and capability. Why is this important to the city? You probably saw some of our map from another city a few weeks ago. But basically, in, in 2005, the city planned and implemented a broadband infrastructure around the perimeter of the city. And you can see, see that on the map with, with a leg going up towards Pretlou Library and, and Ocean View. We'll be, we'll be building that out. But basically, this network was built in 2005. It's a combination of city-owned and leased fiber, leased fiber from Cox, with strategic switches that connect our key mission-critical areas, public safety buildings, schools, and, and otherwise. So, again, the importance of, of this is that Norfolk has really been leading the way from a technology standpoint for over 10 years now. And by refreshing and rebuilding this fiber network, we will provide opportunities to connect communities. We'll talk about that. Position the city for economic development and facilitate partnerships with higher education and other schools.
So, the boundaries don't go into, unless I'm missing, at Campus Stella Berkeley? See where the boundary stops?
Yes, sir. We're going to talk about that in a minute in terms of Wi-Fi capability. But yes, the, this particular INET connects the major mission-critical facilities within the city. So, it's really going to be aligned with police, fire, schools for eventual use. Libraries.
Libraries, yeah.
Right. But, but again, this, but again, this is...
Why is it not in, you know?
But again, this would be the major skeleton. There's going to be a lot of capillaries and other, you know, elements that, that branch out. We currently lease. There's a lot of connectivity within this block with leased fiber. So, that, that'll continue. There's, this is basically what the built-out skeleton will look like.
And will it be with all libraries for the, the city?
Yes. Yes. As a matter of fact, that's why this particular one will go up, is going up Chesapeake.
So, we have a brand-new school coming over, I'm missing, that, we have a brand-new school coming over at Campus Stella. And I guess I'm, I guess what concerns me is that the boundaries that you, you show, it cuts off a whole segment, southern segment of the city. Maybe I'm...
Sir, there's, there's fiber going across that bridge right there, going across to Campus Stella. It's just not on the main INET ring, which connects these main nodes, which is in the middle of the city.
So, what does that do in regard, and see, you're talking to a dinosaur now. But what does that do in regards to broadband and all of that?
It's, it's over there. It's coming across on a separate fiber on its own. It's just not on that main ring, which connects all the major cities, such as EOC, those in City Hall, ambimunicipal buildings. Those, that's what really that, that circle is all about.
So, one of the opportunities we have, I mentioned partnering with the public schools. The public schools lease their own fiber from Cox. I believe that the strategic plan would, would position us to be in a place where we could very easily connect schools to our fiber and reduce costs, but we're not there yet. I mean, that would be the vision, sir, whether it's any new schools. They're currently running their own fiber to the, to the new schools.
Well, politically, frankly, you should have done a better, not, I'm not indicting anybody, but Chip, you should have done a better job and shown something.
Yeah, I think we're...
That's, I think, really, yeah.
They got Ocean View. Thank you. It's usually leave us off, so.
They, they got us.
Understood.
I feel your pain. Okay, so, a real opportunity exists to increase connectivity through the use of free public Wi-Fi. And there are a number of benefits to Wi-Fi, including increased traffic to local businesses. It's going to make us more attractive to future residents and businesses. It supports our smart city initiatives, and I'll, and I'll talk about that in another slide. It also provides, we're working with Fest Events, DNC, and others to provide a city branding and advertising platform. So, we are partnering with those folks in, in downtown and other areas. And so, I think we're going to do some really smart things there. So, how are we going to implement this? We've got a two-phase strategy. The first phase is currently underway, and I'm, I'm proud to restate and reiterate that two weeks ago, the city, in, in partnership with Dominion Resources and DNC, went with free public Wi-Fi at MacArthur Square Station and passed out some cards there on connectivity. And that really is a good, good thing in that it, it will give us an opportunity to observe how that works, look at things like wayfinding, folks coming in off ships. We'll be able to direct people to various landmarks in the city. So, we're really using that as, as a, as an incubator, if you will. And we're in the process of building, going to be building a network for free public Wi-Fi around the entire waterfront, basically from south of the Pagoda to the Waterside District. And, and again, we're partnering with DNC Fest Events and others in terms of how we would use that for branding, helping citizens, businesses, tourists, and, and otherwise. So, we're really, really excited about that. So, that covers the business side. How about some of the neighborhoods that we talked about? We have a real opportunity playing off our network that I showed you to, to expand Wi-Fi in public spaces. And so, I'm really pleased to announce that we are now partnering with WHRO to provide free, free Wi-Fi in early fall in the Park Place community. And so, what does that mean? We're going to use the wireless technology similar to, to MacArthur Square, but we'll, we'll be able to access, 7,800 simultaneous users will be able to access that Wi-Fi in the Park Place community, which is, which is to the point you made, but I think a really big deal. And we're looking at at least two other communities in the coming year. So...
So, again, explain to me about the boundaries and why the, the south side is not in that boundary. I mean, and that looks like that's probably one of the only areas that's not in the boundary. I'm looking on the...
Yes, sir.
West and somewhere around, maybe parts of Lambeth Point, I see 38th and 48th Street.
Right.
Not bound.
So, Mr. Riddick, I'll, I'll try, and, because they have to educate me also. So, they built a ring. So, a ring is a ring is a ring. So, they could have put, can you go back to the slide?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the ring could have been, you know, here or, so they're ring, but that's not it. So, after that, the ring is going to have, whether you call them capillaries or veins or arteries that go throughout the entire city. So, a better, we could have just gone to, how do you stay connected throughout the city? So, there's no way in the world that south side is going to be disconnected from, from the south. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, you got, a ring is a ring is a ring.
[laughing]
Unless it's not.
Okay, so Norfolk is a smart city and getting smarter every day. What does that mean? What does a smart city mean? Basically, a smart city leverages technology to enhance city services, and it's data-driven. So, we will use analytics to actually provide better services, smarter services to our residents. So, that's what smart city is, is, is all about. And we're beginning to leverage existing applications and actually bringing new on, online. As a matter of fact, George, in a, in a few minutes, will be briefing you on an online permitting system, which is, gets to the heart of smart city processing. We have smart parking meters. We have storm and Titan that are used in terms of natural disasters and events, and many more. Utilities, energy consumption, and this is really a big deal for the city. At the same time that we're doing all this, I wanted to mention this because I know it's something that only becomes an issue when it becomes an issue, and that's cyber, cybersecurity. I want to assure you that the city is taking the necessary technological safeguards to protect your data. You know, we're using best industry standards, antivirus filtering and other software. The thing that we want to concentrate on in the coming year is leading a cultural change where we have our... change where we have our employees and users of our system, better user awareness and a team approach to security. I was on a panel recently, a regional panel on cybersecurity, and you know, the issue really is not if we will be breached, but when. And so we have business continuity plans in place, and that's going to be a really important thing in terms of how would we recover in the event of an issue. So again, the city is really leading the region in technological innovation, and how are we doing this? We're doing this through an enhanced and scalable fiber ring that we talked about. We've expanded our access to public Wi-Fi, and again, we're one of the first cities in the region that has free Wi-Fi in public venues. If you look at the technical magazines, they always bring up Seattle, Kansas City, and there was just a recent article where Kansas City said, hey, we got a great idea. We're going to have public Wi-Fi. Well, I want you to know that Norfolk is there also, and we're excited about that. This was a big deal. Just a few months ago, we were named Virginia's 2015 Google City winner, and this is really for strength of businesses accessing computers in their day-to-day life, and Google actually called us a digital city. That is one of the, you know, the main factors in that award. And I'm also happy to say that in the fall, September timeframe, the city is going to host a smart city symposium in conjunction with Microsoft and other vendors, and so we're going to really get after that, and I think it'll pay dividends for us.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Google and Microsoft both, if I'm not mistaken, have grants and programs that they fund for cities that are working to get either broadband or Wi-Fi into neighborhoods that are low to moderate income or that are subject to the digital divide. Are we able, because of these designations and all these wonderful things, are we able to go after any of that money, or is that something totally separate?
That could be an outcome. We were able to access Microsoft through Christine and the Resilient City 100, because they're a major player in that, and so we've started to talk to them. They're helping us with cybersecurity and smart city. They call it Next City. That could be an outcome, but it's not something I've talked to them about. Google's a totally different animal. They basically pick a city strategically. They come in and say, get out of the way, we're going to lay our fiber, and their benefits to residents is primarily not used for city business. We've talked to Google. I've told them strategically, we appear to be just north and east of Charlotte and Raleigh, but we haven't made a lot of progress there yet. So moving forward, we constantly want to look at balancing, lowering the cost of internet for our businesses, for the city and for residents, while increasing the access to those products and services. So how are we going to lower costs? We will continue to build out our city-owned infrastructure. Again, the fiber that we own keeps us from leasing it. The first year, we're going to save about $200,000 through the project that you funded. We're going to renegotiate the Cox franchise agreement, and we continue to attract new providers. The more fiber we own, the more companies will be interested in us because we can share that. And how do we, in the long term, short term, increase accessibility? We talked about developing a long-term strategy via the working group and our strategic consultant. We will have, the city will have the infrastructure in place that'll be good for 15 to 20 years. This team will allow us to develop and utilize this in the best way for the city. I think we have to continue to explore regional partnerships. It makes sense to talk to our sister cities about how to partner and connect with them, and I think we're going to continue to leverage wireless internet technology. I'm meeting with one of the prime vendors here in two weeks to talk about 5G technology and how that can help the city from a wireless perspective, and we'll continue to discuss best practices with other cities in the region. So that concludes my presentation. If there are questions? Yes, sir.
I know, talking about boards and commissions is a sensitive issue right now, but the last meeting, I had discussed the IT Commission. I think that now more than ever that we've moved forward with this budget item of $4 million and expanding this, that we need to have ambassadors out there, pretty much similar to what we did with the bike and trails, and that we have a group of citizens that we appoint that can be out there speaking to civic leagues, that can be a point of contact for us, for you, to use to throw things off of, and I'm hoping that we can get that established sooner than later. You know, I don't know if you want to wait till the new council, Paul, but if it's something that you believe in too, that we can start at least looking for people that may want to serve on that.
Sure. Yes. You missed my joke. You got it?
Add a new one.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks a lot. That was a little bit...
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, you have my PowerPoint in your drop box, so I'm not going to attempt to go through the whole thing. As part of the Smart City Smart Processing Initiative that was begun about four years ago, one of the latest components of this is what we call Smart Permitting, which is a cloud-based permits management system that will be shared by planning, neighborhood development, and various other entities and agencies who need to be able to tie into the building permits and the enforcement modules. The beginning rollout of this has been set for the 5th of July for the first phase. We're going to do this in a phased approach, so the first phase is the basic module, where people will actually be able to obtain permits, will be able to schedule inspections and manage things through the portal. The next phase will allow for a complete online application for permits. We're going to roll this out through the rest of the year, just to make sure that each phase works and people are comfortable with it before moving on to the next phase. The reason we need to talk about this today is that at your next meeting, you will consider some changes to the fee schedule that will allow for this process, this system to work. And we currently have a rather Byzantine fee structure that actually requires you to submit your plans and have them reviewed before we can determine what your fee could possibly be, because it's through the review process that we determine what your building classification and fire rating classification are, and that's what goes into the system. So that's the current table. That's what you have to navigate through, and what we want to do is go to a simple 15 cent a square foot for residential, 16 cent a square foot for commercial, and what that basically does is keep everything more or less exactly in line with where we are today. Some fees are not going to change at all, and others, as you can see, the magnitude of change is basically insignificant. Let me make perfectly clear, nobody makes a choice about whether to build or not build in the city of Norfolk because the building permit costs $46.66 more or less than it once did. Now, if these were hundreds of dollars, then that might be a difference, but in, you know, in this case, this is almost a rounding error for the most part. So you will have this in front of you on the 14th, and we have already started the testing. We have tablets in the field with our inspectors, both in neighborhood development as well as in planning, and as I mentioned, we'll be rolling this out starting the 5th of July to the public. As part of that, you've got that in your, as part of the rollout, we're doing a number of things with the help of our marketing office. We're going to have a mailer that's going to go out to everybody who's done business with the city for permits, and we have a really cool video.
Later this summer, a new process will allow residents and commercial builders simpler, faster, and more efficient access to construction permits in Norfolk. This effort called Smart Permitting is just the latest in a series of city initiatives to streamline and improve customer service here in Norfolk. Over the last few years, we have introduced electronic submission for site and building plans, and provided online access to permit information. This spring, building and code inspectors began using tablets to increase efficiency, enhance public safety, and just generally make life better here in Norfolk. Smart Permitting will allow automation of permits, inspection, and code enforcement, as well as online payments. It will also greatly simplify the fee structure, 15 cents per square foot for residential construction, and 16 cents per square foot for commercial. Compare that to this. Some fees will increase, some will decrease, and some will stay the same. One thing that will definitely change, it will be easier to get stuff done.
Props to Brent in the marketing office for, that's great.
So are we going to monitor this as far as use and how people are satisfied with it? And, you know, I think it'd be really interesting for us to have an update on it.
Yeah, we're going to, you know, as part of this whole thing, process improvement is what this is all about, and we're going to continue to, you know, engage in continuous process improvement. But yeah, we'll find out what people like. Some things will be easy to tweak, some things we may have to help them understand can't be tweaked, but we can, we're going to try to make this easy for the customers. It is a customer-focused initiative, and we'll also hopefully make it easier for staff.
Okay, got to go. Marcus, the presentation on the rentals, I think Adam's probably doing it in his sleep. It's been moved now through three meetings. Can we make sure it's first?
Sure.
When do we meet again?
Two weeks.
14.
Yes, sir.